Okay, we'll get this meeting started. Welcome to the special meeting of the City Council. Roll call. I believe Councilmember Lopez is not present with us. Did you hear from him?
I did not hear from him.
Okay, so technically Councilwoman Lopez right now is absent.
Yes. Do you like me to take roll call?
I think four members are present.
Okay.
With the exception of Councilmember Lopez. Public comments. Any members of the public who want to speak address the City Council? I don't see anybody. So we'll go right down to the mid-year budget review. And who wants to begin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Star, City Staff, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'm here to present our mid-year budget review for fiscal year 2425. I know, why is this not working? So we'll start with the summary of recommended changes to the fiscal year 2425 general fund budget. So the total requests were just over 1.6 million, and we reduced that to $359,018. Sorry, it's not cooperating with me tonight. Okay, so for the City Council, City Manager, Administrative Services, and Human Services Departments, there were no changes. For the Police Department, records overtime, they requested $20,000. We're accepting the $20,000, but we're able to cover a portion of that with transfers from records part-time wages and records sick leave redemption. So the net effect to the general fund will be $9,000. Records office supplies, they requested $4,000. We are recommending $0. Investigations overtime, they're requesting $50,000. We're allowing $45,000, and that will be handled with a transfer from Uniform Patrol overtime, Fund 1149. Investigations range supplies, they requested $5,000. We're allowing $5,000, and that will be handled with transfers from investigations program supplies and special investigations. Uniform patrol, maintenance, transportation, and work equipment, they're requesting $3,000. We're allowing $2,000, and that will be handled with a transfer from Uniform patrol, maintenance, other equipment. For communications overtime, they're requesting $75,000. We're allowing $75,000, and that will be handled with a transfer from communications regular earnings. Communications small equipment, they're requesting $5,000. We're allowing $3,000. So the total for the Police Department, they requested $162,000, and with transfers and some items that we didn't allow, it's only going to affect the general fund by $12,000. For the Fire Department, emergency services overtime, they requested $476,000. We're allowing $460,000, and with the transfer from numerous accounts, that did bring the amount down to just over $130,000. Emergency services uniforms, they requested $10,000. We're, did not allow any increase in that account. Emergency services, emergency medical services program supplies, they requested $11,000. We're allowing $7,000. And emergency medical services small equipment, they requested $3,125, and we allowed no increase. Total increase for the Fire Department is $146,818. Public Works Department, street maintenance overtime, they're requesting $22,000. We're allowing $18,000, and that will be covered with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Street maintenance special contract services, they requested $130,063. We're allowing $114,600, and with transfers from numerous accounts, brought it down to a little over $31,000. That will affect the general fund. Signing and painting overtime, they requested $2,000. We're allowing $2,000. Street maintenance regular earnings will cover that with a transfer. Street sweeping overtime, they requested $2,200. We're allowing $2,200. Street maintenance regular earnings will cover that cost. Street sweeping materials, street sweeping, they're requesting $5,000. We're allowing $5,000. Park maintenance overtime, they're requesting $5,000. We're allowing $5,000 with a transfer from park maintenance regular earnings. Park maintenance special contract services, they requested $200,000. We're allowing $200,000 with transfers from all of those accounts. It did reduce the amount that will affect the general fund. Irrigation maintenance special contract services, they're requesting $3,786. We're allowing $3,786 with a transfer from irrigation maintenance regular earnings. Vehicle maintenance overtime, they're requesting $715. We're allowing $715 with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Vehicle maintenance materials, transportation, and work equipment, they requested $15,000. We're allowing $15,000 with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Vehicle maintenance, maintenance, transportation, and work equipment, they're requesting $27,975. We're allowing $27,975 with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Vehicle maintenance, maintenance, other equipment, they're requesting $4,670. We're allowing $4,670 with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Street maintenance, I'm sorry, sewer maintenance license, permit certificates, they're requesting $15,050. We're accepting that increase with a transfer from sewer maintenance regular earnings. Sewer maintenance special contract services, they're requesting $87,104. We're suggesting $70,000, and that will be handled with a transfer from sewer maintenance regular earnings. Building maintenance overtime, they're requesting $9,000. We're accepting that with a transfer from irrigation maintenance regular earnings. Building maintenance materials, buildings, they're requesting $157,722. We're allowing $141,944. The items that are being approved is the flooring in the senior center hallway, the repair to partitions in the senior center, repairs to the Kingsley Ball Field Tower, and repairs to the roof that are non-warranty repairs. These will be covered by lease revenue bonds, so there will be no effect to the general fund. Heating and air conditioning overtime, requesting $1,200. We're accepting $1,200 with a transfer from street maintenance regular earnings. Janitorial services overtime, they're requesting $10,000. We're accepting $10,000 with a transfer from irrigation maintenance regular earnings. So the effect to the general fund is $47,100, and the effect to the 2021 lease revenue bonds is $141,944. Community development, code enforcement overtime, they're requesting $2,617. We're accepting that with a transfer from code enforcement regular earnings. And code enforcement materials recycle cleanup, they're requesting $3,745. We're accepting that with a transfer from code enforcement regular earnings. There were no changes to economic development or city attorney departments. And to citywide, for citywide general city insurance, the bill for this was a lot higher than we anticipated at time of budget, so we're increasing by $392,100 with transfers from other accounts. Brought it down to $153,100. And the statement of general fund expenditures for six-month ending December 31, 2024. So overall, the city, we're at 58% expended right now, as you see at the bottom right-hand corner. And our general fund revenue detail for the six months ending December 31. So we're seeing a decrease of $983,659 in our taxes, tax revenue, due mainly to sales tax and Measure F and Measure L reductions. They're, with the economy still being down, and more people buying online, our tax sales are, have been declining. Licenses and permits are up $200,000. Intergovernmental revenues up $19,942. Fines and forfeitures up $45,000. Charges for services up $349,000. And miscellaneous revenue up $430,000 with a net total revenue increase of $60,283. So our fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year review general operating fund analysis. So we only anticipate an increase in general fund revenues of $60,283, but our expenditures that we're approving are $359,018. So we do have a deficit of $298,735. If revenues don't increase, then we will have to make transfers from reserves to cover that cost. So the fiscal impact, revising the city's appropriations budget increases the spending authority by $359,018 in the general operating fund. Revising the city's estimated revenue budget has a total positive impact to the general operating fund of $60,283. Approval of both appropriations and estimated revenue budgets would have a negative budgetary impact to the general operating fund of $298,735. With the economy still on the decline and negative sales, negative sales tax projections for the remainder of the fiscal year, it is anticipated that transfers from reserves will fund this negative budgetary impact. Staff recommends the City Council consider the city's mid-year budget review documents and approve proposed changes to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. We'll answer any questions.
Could we start over?
You got your point.
Okay, so. You know, the question I'll ask is on the revenue side, but we're obviously seeing a decline in sales tax dollars. Is that more towards the economy, or is it more towards internet sales? Or is it a combination of both?
Well, it's a combination of a number of factors. Clearly, all economies throughout the world are still trying to recover from the pandemic. In the United States alone, during the pandemic period, the U.S. government saw a decline of $2.1 trillion. Local governments throughout the nation saw similar, not obviously to that degree, but similar declines within their respective economies. And so while most of the nation has recovered, we are seeing dynamics in the current economy that are cause for grave concern. The $280,000 that we're down here, 280,000, what was it?
$298,000.
$298,000 that we are down as far as our mid-year budget requests and the potential to borrow from the reserve, I think, is the tip of the iceberg, and it's reflective of what we need to plan for, for the next budget year. This morning, the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta announced that the real GDP growth in the first quarter of 2025 was down negative 2.8%, and that's down negative 1.5% just from last week. So the reserve is anticipating that the policies coming out of the current administration are going to probably have an effect on the economy as it continues to progress. Not to say that those policies won't ultimately affect improvements, but right now, the reaction within the economic sector is anticipating a decline initially, and hopefully, we will expect to see a recovery. But our meetings with HDL, the city's sales and property tax consultant, have indicated that the recovery, if it comes, will not be until next year. And so for the balance of this year, we should expect that we continue to see a decline. Right now, our revenues are down 4%, and that is 4% on top of last year, that was down 6%. So we've only seen a slight recovery of improvement year to year, and we have not had our most recent meeting with HDL to determine the fallout or the impacts that are to be anticipated coming from other actions from the administration, including the tariffs. And the president did announce today that he would be proceeding with 25% tariffs on China, on Mexico and Canada, and those tariffs will be in effect tomorrow. In addition to that, 10% tariff on oil from Canada and Mexico, slightly less than 25%. Unfortunately for the nation, Alberta, a province in Canada, provides a significant share of oil to the United States. In fact, oil reserves coming from Alberta exceed the oil reserves from the next five major nations that contribute oil sales to the United States. So that is obviously a big concern. Another concern for us is the 25% tariffs that were announced on steel aluminum earlier this year. The gold line did receive their bids on the 26th of February. Those bids were delayed by one month as the contractor took into consideration the tariffs on steel and aluminum, and as you know, steel is a major part of the construction of the gold line. We will not know until April the 10th what the bid package is. My speculation is that the Pomona to Montclair, to Clermont segment probably will be funded, even with the high-risk component related to, the unknown impacts related to the tariffs. It's the Clermont to Montclair segment that concerns me. $80 million is allocated by SBCTA, and there is not a lot of indication from SBCTA that they are willing to go significantly higher than the $80 million that is authorized. They may go up to $93 million. That's a number that has been discussed, but that number was discussed prior to the tariffs. And so if the tariffs impose a significant risk factor and take the cost of construction for the gold line from Clermont to Montclair up into the, let's say, the $130 million range, I would expect that SBCTA would likely bulk at providing the additional funds. And Metro has made it clear, LA Metro has made it clear, that they will not fund any portion of construction in San Bernardino County because the money from LA Metro is exclusively for their county, and probably, based on their operating agreements, they are not authorized to expend funds in addition, in other counties. So we probably should not look at funding in that particular area. Inflation is another issue that we need to be concerned with. Right now, inflation, as of today, is up 3.3% over the previous month, and that appears to be something that will continue to rise until the consumer confidence improves, and that's down right now. In fact, consumer confidence has declined from nine, has declined 9.3 points to 72.9. And the Conference Board says that a reading under 80 signals a potential recession in the near future. So we are now well below the 80, and consumer confidence seems to suggest that consumers themselves believe that a recession is near, and they are stepping back from making purchases. In fact, purchases, while purchases for durable goods have actually increased slightly from December, the speculation from the Conference Board is the reason for the increase in durable goods is that consumers are readying for the tariffs, so they're making purchases for vehicles, appliances, and other hard goods, durable goods, related to their expectation. And even though there has been that slight increase for January, it is on top of a decrease that occurred in December. So with the tariffs going into place, at least for Canada, Mexico, and an additional 10% on China tomorrow, the expectation is that the purchase of durable goods will probably experience a decline after that. And then retail sales are down 0.9% compared to the previous month, and that expectation is to obviously continue. The areas where purchases are appearing to start to decline significantly are in car parts, recreational goods, appliances, furniture, clothing. And the only areas where consumers are spending money right now are in financial services and insurance, some recreation services, gasoline and other energy goods, food service and accommodations, and housing, and utilities. And what's interesting here is that in relation to insurance, insurance costs have actually increased, and as our finance director indicated, our insurance costs for this year unexpectedly increased. We had budgeted about $980,000 for the year for insurance-related costs, and right now, those insurance numbers are at $1.6 million. So we expect that, that's again, just a beginning of the trend, and in our current conversations with our insurance provider, and considering the way that the insurance provider is reacting to every little issue that we have insured, or that they were unaware that we had insured through the insurance provider, we should expect a significant increase above that $1.6 million as we go into the next fiscal year. In fact, a reflection of the insurance comes out of the fires in Los Angeles County earlier this year. The state, a few years ago, established what was called California's Fair Plan, and it was a last-resort insurance plan for people in areas where they were unable to obtain insurance because a number of insurance providers have bailed out of the market in those areas, particularly where there is a threat of wildfires. And while the Fair Plan was only intended to be a temporary insurance backup provider for about a year, what they have found is that 83% of the individuals using Fair Plan have actually been on it for a number of years now, simply because they are unable to provide additional insurance. And State Farm, which is a major provider of insurance in the state of California, I believe they have about 23% of all of the policies held in the state, have indicated that they will be pulling out of the state, or at least in some areas, particularly as it relates to high-risk fire areas. They asked for a 22% increase. The California Insurance Agency has indicated that they will, authority has indicated that they need to evaluate that, and that 20%, 2% increase request is on top of a similar request the previous year. So clearly, there's an indication that insurance is going to continue to skyrocket in the state of California. So these are a number of areas that we are concerned with. They certainly are reflected to some degree in the mid-year budget requests, which is why we looked very hard at all of the requests we reached the departments to determine how we can accommodate their requests. And as Ms. Colbeck explained, Mrs. Colbeck explained, the city looked internally to existing funds within each department, to try and find the funds to meet the requests to bulk up those other areas without impacting the areas in which we were directing funds away from. I think we've been largely successful in that regard, and in those areas where the city made the determination to reduce the request or to not provide a request, it is because we looked at all of the expenditures related to the department in each of those projects where they were asking for requests. We looked at historical data. We looked at current trends, and after our calculations and evaluations, we determined that either they had sufficient funds within the program to continue with their operations, or the requests that they were submitting were not justified significantly to warrant additional funding. And even with the requests for those particular items, we still felt that the departments had the necessary funding within their internal operations for moving forward and maintaining the ability to provide the services requested. So that's our perspective at this point in time on how the budget condition is going, at least in our area. We hope that something will break before the end of the current fiscal year, so that we can see a light at the end of the tunnel as we move into preparation of the budget for the next fiscal year. But right now, from my perspective, it's dire, and I think that we should plan on preparing for reductions in the budget that we present to the City Council for consideration in fiscal year '25, '26.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Councilmember Mendez.
Just going through everything, reading everything that we received, just a couple of questions. On the, a lot of the sewer stuff that you're asking about, talks about sewer maintenance, regular earnings, recouping money from those, that fund, and I was looking at the 2425 budget, and what caught my eye was it had in there nine maintenance workers under sewer, which I thought was really interesting, because I don't think they have nine. So I was just wondering about that. And then also, in here, it talked about sinkholes and new water meters, and using sewer money to pay for that. I didn't, I didn't know we could use sewer money for, for other items other than sewer-related. So that's just a question I had regarding that. And then I had a colleague of mine, friend, that told me something about that we had an audit, and just wondering if we had the report or the audit for that that we could see, or is it available? He didn't know anything about it, that, the guy that was telling me, but just was wondering. He was telling me that it wasn't good, and I'm like, I haven't heard anything about that, and so I just thought it was kind of interesting. And other than that, that was, that was it. Those are my only questions.
Okay. As far as the last item, the audit report, I presume the friend had to be a city employee. I don't know what person outside the organization would know about an audit report. But in any event, the city has responded to the audit report. In fact, it was sent out to the state last Friday. I believe that the responses that the city prepared were fulsome, and that the state has received a response that they need to take into consideration. I don't believe that there should be any penalties to the city in relation to the audit report. I believe that a lot of the issues that the state raised were insignificant, that they really were made more out of a complaint from an employee within the organization, as opposed to the audit really being necessary. But nonetheless, the audit was completed, and we responded in a fulsome way to those requests. We can certainly make the response available to the City Council. Just cautioning you that at this point in time, it's strictly between staff and the audit, and we need to wait for a response back. I believe before, we probably should provide it to the City Council so that you can understand what the original complaints were, what the city's response was, and what the state's response back is to the city, so that you have a full, detailed response as to how that audit proceeded. The nine workers were actually a component of that audit. The state raised the same issue, but I believe that it is a misunderstanding from the state as to way the city's budget process works. Surprising to me, because I would presume that agencies throughout the state of California operate the same way, that you have individuals who are not necessarily assigned to a program, but they have duties and responsibilities related to fulfilling the duties and obligations of that program. So for example, in finance, finance oversees financial aspects of the operation of the sewer program. So the sewer program needs to reimburse the finance department in relation to those services that it provides. When we prepare the budget, we allocate a percentage of finance employee work related to the sewer program. The state looked at those percentages as they were distributed throughout the organization, calculated them up, and came up with a total of nine employees, based on not only the individuals that are assigned to the sewer program, but those percentages of employees in other departments and other divisions within the Public Works program that provided support assistance to the sewer program. That was explained to the state, how the city's budget works, and that there are not more than the full-time individuals that are assigned to the sewer program. These others are merely support staff. We have to wait for the state's response as it relates to the city's response regarding those nine workers, and I actually thought the number was 13.
It said nine in the, but also, the first, you had said it was probably a city, it wasn't a city employee, it was an Inland Empire Utilities Agency person that told me about the audit.
I find that interesting. I don't know why IUA would be privy to it, but okay. And then your second request was related to water. And then your second request was related to water meters and I, are you asking about new meters that we are installing on the manholes to detect when there is an overflow potential so that we can respond accordingly? I believe those are the meters that we have in the budget, correct?
I thought it said water meter. It says new water meters. That's why I was questioning.
Can you hear me? Okay, yes. If I may add, those meters are actually for the construction of the mediums along, you know, the, the landscape upgrades to the mediums and the roadway improvements along Central Avenue. They weren't paid for as part of the project, so I'm looking into, into the billing of that, like it was charged to the sewer. It's, it is stormwater runoff, you know, that we're collecting in the mediums, so they eventually end up in the sewer system. So maybe that's why we coded it that way. And then we do have other, in the sewer program, we do have those smart sewer covers that is part of the budget. I don't know, does that answer your question or clarify your?
No, not really. I mean, it, it says water meters, so it's not stormwater retention or?
It's, it's the recycling water. So, so it, so the recycling water and the NPDS permit is all under?
Oh, these are reclaimed water meters?
Yes, for reclaimed water.
Oh, okay.
So it's all part of the, under the sewer program.
So we, we probably didn't provide a, a good enough description in the budget to define what that is and we'll make certain we do that in the future.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Rue.
I'll start off where you left off, Mr. Mayor, that I too have a concern about retailing and what's going on. It's, there's a tremendous consolidation in the industry right now. You'll notice, and I think anybody who follows just the basic news, 7-Eleven is closing a huge number of stores across the country. Walgreens is closing a huge number of stores across the country. Some of the chain grocery stores, the large national chains, they're cutting back on their locations, closing some or in other cases, making the more limited service. A lot of this is due to the fact that people just simply order online and have it delivered to their home. I don't do that. Lots of people do. In fact, what I did at Christmas time, if I ordered anything, I tried to make sure it was from a store that had a location here in Montclair. I had it delivered to the store and then at the counter, this sounds complicated, I refunded the item, then repurchased so that we would get the sales tax here. It is a bit complicated, but it can be done. We know Forever 21 is closing. They have 359 or 360 stores across the country. Their parent company has decided to simply close them. It's not a ding on Montclair. Our store is closing. It has to do, they feel that there's overlap with the other stores that they do own such as Aeropostal and some of the others. This is unfortunately due to the fact that everybody orders online. And when you order online, you're hurting your local community. And we just have to start looking at that. I don't know how we brace for this for the future. There's got to be some relief at the state and the federal level on this, but until that happens, we have to deal with this. Even some of the retailers who were doing very well over the holiday season, TJ Maxx and Marshalls, I should say the TJX Group, that was TJ Maxx, Marshalls, Sierra Trading Post and a couple of others, they did very well over the holidays. If what I read today was true, they're lowering their estimates for the first quarter of 2025, again, due to online presence. Most of their stores you can order online. You can go, go in and buy an item there. That is a huge impact. I think what the city manager said about tariffs, a lot of goods that are coming in to many of our stores are made in other countries, not just China and Canada, not just Mexico, from all over the world. Some of these are specialty items, some of them are far more than I could afford to purchase even in two lifetimes, but that is going to be part of the problem. So we will have to look at what we need to do down the line with our, excuse me, with our budgets and what we plan to do with them. The fires, I won't, I have something for later, but yes, with the Fair Plan, that is a big hit to California. My home insurance has gone up. I do not live in a fire zone. About two years ago, through work, and I try, have to try to separate, but this is germane to what I'm talking about. I was asked to testify before the Insurance Commission, which I did. One of the examples I used was given to me and I had from throughout the area that I served for work. Wilter had a home listed for sale behind the magic lamp. Most of you here, I think, know where the magic lamp is. Homes are built '52, '53, '55 in that era. She could not get any type of fire insurance for her client, none, zero. The rationale used was she was within five miles of a fire zone and therefore a spark can travel five miles. That's what we're seeing with some of this. That's a huge impact on our economy. If you can't get insurance in a city such as Montclair or Rancho Cucamonga behind the magic lamp, that's a big hit to the economy. People are saying, I've got to go to the Fair Plan. And the Fair Plan was supposed to be the policy of last resort, not first resort. So all of this will have to be figured out, but it's going to have a huge hit to the city. It's a huge hit to the region. And I do speak to the Insurance Commissioner probably every other week for work and he is trying, but it's a complicated situation. It's more complicated when you factor in Prop 103 and what went on with that, whether you like it or don't like it, is not the issue. The issue is it's there, we have to deal with it. So a lot of that is affecting us and I think also just from what I've read, changing tastes in retailing. A lot of families are no longer buying for the high end, they're going to lower-end products. And in some cases, they're just not buying at all. They're saying, I'll make do with what I, with what I have right now. So we do need to prepare for that and I'll, I know there are other questions, so I'll just leave it at that right now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez.
Since my timing at this meeting was impeccable, I might be a little scatterbrained and maybe all over the place with respect to my questions, I apologize. Real quickly, Mr. City Manager, on, in the column that lists your recommended increase-decrease, explain to me real quickly, I saw on one, there was a recommendation for a $45,000 transfer and then right underneath that, there was $45,000 in parentheses, normally reflecting a decrease. In the parentheses, are you, is that referencing a transfer of funds over to cover the 45 recommendation?
Yes, that's what it means.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought. On page six, under the Police Department, regarding the motorcycles, do we presently have motorcycle officers or are those positions vacant at present?
The positions are vacant. We don't have motorcycle officers right now and I don't believe we are identifying anyone in the immediate future to go on the motorcycles. We've had some concerns related to staffing the motorcycles and unfortunately has resulted in a number of worker comp claims related to individuals that have been going on the motorcycles due to injuries after they, during their training. And so the chief and I have not had a conversation about it lately, but I would expect that for the current fiscal year, the program is probably suspended.
Okay. Now, the $8,000 expended on repairs, was that to get those motorcycles ready in the event that we had bodies to fill them?
Yes, they're older motorcycles and they did need some improvements, plus our annual maintenance just to keep them operational, so yes.
Did you want to say something, Chief?
No, I'm sorry, that's, I didn't know if you wanted me to come up. That's accurate. And we wanted the motorcycles to be available should we have the staffing levels back up where we can find that position, but during the training, some damages were incurred, which is normal during the training for the motor, so we had to make those repairs on those bikes so that they are operational and ready to go. We have a couple of officers right now, a sergeant, that are capable of riding the motorcycle for a special type assignment, but we don't have the, with our vacancies, we don't have the personnel to fill those positions for, for the moment, but we do want to have the, the equipment operational and that's what those repairs came from. So we don't foresee any, in this fiscal year, any, any more repairs occurring on those motorcycles. That's where those, those expenses came from.
The reason why this item stood out to me is because, as you know, for the past maybe three to five months, we've been discussing the high-volume vehicles on Mona Vista and speeding and all that. And many of these residents that have expressed those concerns, they said, why don't we have motorcycle officers? And I was telling them, well, that they should be coming. And now I'll stop saying that because based upon the city manager's comment, it fortunately does not look like they will be coming, perhaps maybe even in the next fiscal year, which is unfortunate because they would be an asset. And that's not your fault.
They would be, we just have vacancies in the department right now and we don't have the, someone to fill those positions as well, even if we had someone capable of doing it at this moment.
So, Mr. City Manager, the, the request is for 2,000, but yet in, again, in per ends, there's the 2,000. We're making a transfer. Is that just to cover the unexpected maintenance costs, some of them, defray it?
Yes.
Okay. Regarding the dispatchers, page seven of the, of the packet, I understand those that are taking FML leave, which is fine, that, that, as they should. But in addition to those, am I understanding that we have permanent vacancies that are just not filled now?
Well, the department has mostly been staffed fully in the dispatcher area and we did lose one this week, but for the most part, they've been successful in keeping most of the positions fully staffed. Again, there's maybe one that has been vacant periodically, but the result here is that because of a number of issues and, and trying to get them up to full staffing, there has been vacancies that had to be addressed with overtime, so.
Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you wanted me to speak on that, that's?
Absolutely, go ahead.
We, we, we have not stopped attempting to fill these positions as they become vacant, so we're actively, we're in an active recruitment and testing process as we speak to fill those vacant positions that sometimes come up unexpectedly. Someone has a change of career path or something and they give us so notice that they don't want to work here anymore, we had to fill those positions, but we are always actively recruiting for those and we're doing so at this time being.
How many presently do we have filled?
We, what did I just, give me one moment, please, sorry. We only have, and I say only lightly, but we have two vacant positions and that was, those are positions that were actively, it looks like we have some good candidates to fill those positions. We're in the middle of a testing process for that.
And how many are presently filled?
We have seven out of nine presently filled.
Okay.
And plus a supervisor.
And that, is that including those that are out on family medical leave?
Yes, I'm talking about dispatchers we have that are employees, whether or not that, I'm not including whether they're not presently working or out on leave right now.
How many presently are out on leave?
Do you know the answer to that? We have one presently out on leave.
So then six operational at the moment. All right.
Seven, well, six operational, yes.
One's out, okay.
Expected to return.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. That's, that's good. I was a little concerned there if numbers started to drop, but I know we had a problem with that maybe about a year and a half, two years ago.
Yeah, we're, we're getting some great candidates processed for, to fill those vacancies.
No, I appreciate that, absolutely. Page eight, regarding Fire Department. We have hired recent, hired firefighters and I know that they're, I'll call them hip boots for the, for the all intents and purposes, but what do you guys call them?
Patientary firefighter.
The, is it not, not, goodness. The, the uniforms that are specifically tailored and designed for the firefighter's body structure and they cannot be shared with others and all that, what are those called?
Oh, that's their Class B uniforms.
Okay. There was another term that, maybe I'm not accurately trying to pinpoint what I'm trying to say is?
Are you thinking of turnout gear?
There you go, the turnouts. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So they can't be shared, they can't be reused and passed on from one firefighter to another.
Well, the turnout gear can be. If it fits, if it fits a future firefighter, the turnout gear can be assigned to a future firefighter.
Yes, if it does fit correctly. There are specifics to fit this body style of the particular firefighter. If they fit that size, then they can be reused. However, the National Fire Protection Agency gives guidelines on those, on the sizing.
Okay. All right. On this line item regarding uniforms, we have budgeted $30,000. $15,888 was spent. There's $14,000 left, oh, I'm sorry. $14,000 was spent. We have $15,888 left and there's an increase for $10,000 more. What was the reason for the $10,000 request?
Yeah, at the time, the budget was polled at the $12,000, we had, had performed hiring for four additional firefighters, so those invoices had not yet hit to deplete that account further.
So based on this recommendation, there'll be no, that line item will not be met. What do you intend to do to address those invoices?
Those invoices came in, they reduced our account down to about 2,000, so we have 2,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year to meet our other uniform obligations when our employees need new shirts and pants, et cetera.
Mr. City Manager, how are we going to perhaps address that particular item because there's no guarantee that the current firefighters we have on our payroll are going to stay? They could always leave at any time. And the need for more uniforms?
If, if there's a need for additional uniforms, we will reallocate it through other savings in the budget. That should not be an issue, but based on, we were not aware of these outstanding invoices and that might have made a change in, in what the authorization request would have been approved for by myself and Finance Director Colbeck. But at this point in time, I, $2,000 is, is maybe enough over the balance of the five months for the year, but if it's not, we will find the additional funding in the budget.
Okay. Thank you both, gentlemen. Public Works, page 10. It's page 11. We budgeted $467,000. We've expended 378, leaving $89,000 in the budget. There's a request for 130 and just shy of half of that will be met. The Colts Landing Agreement, in the last line of the paragraph for the justification, it states that $210,000 is remaining, the remaining budget for the last six months is $210,000 with another $9,600 needed to cover palm tree trimming, trimming. That contract obviously cannot be, we can't breach that amount because we were entered into that agreement, but are we, if they are requesting 130,000, I'm concerned about the contract. Please explain, what, what am I missing with respect to that contract? And then I'll get to the tree trimming issue.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Apologize, I thought you were through.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, as again, as I said earlier, we go through the budget with a fine-toothed comb. We look at what their patterns of expenditure are. We've been with Colt for a while now. And just because a contract says a certain amount of money doesn't mean that that amount of money is actually spent. We see this time and time again with contracts that we have entered into with various vendors and almost regularly, the contract amount is not met. And so normally, when we have the annual budget meetings with the departments, they make their argument for a budgeted amount that is based on what a vendor is saying they will need. We look at the historical data and determine that the, the request is just overstated, not by the department, but by the expectation of the vendor. And the vendor, we understand, is covering contingencies and anticipating expenditures that may occur during the course of the year that historically don't occur, but that's just the contractor building in some extra in case he gets there and they want the city to be aware of that. Again, we go back and we look at all the historical data. We've certainly looked at Colt. And if you look at Colt, based on the fact that we are using Colt more aggressively to provide other services, when we looked at the numbers, the numbers actually looked at, they probably are actually higher than this. But when you do a complete analysis of what Colt is charging for all of the various programs, in the end, it turned out to us that the numbers that the department was requesting for this particular object code probably can be substantially met, if not completely met, by the addition of probably can be substantially met, if not completely met, by the addition of additional[654.23][654.26]$114,000 instead of the $130,000 request. We are usually pretty accurate in our analysis and are forwarding a request to the city council to approve it. And I think that this will probably prove out as well, that this is a case where a vendor is speculating that it's going to be this amount of money, but it's probably going to be less.
And the $9,600 for the palm tree trimming is separate from the contract?
Well, that would not at all be associated with Colt. That would be associated with West Coast Arborists. And after looking at the budget and the funds available for West Coast Arborists, we believe, again, that the $114,000 total for this particular object code will provide the necessary funding.
I'm just concerned, just given with the recent situation with us having some wind situations that have been significantly out of the ordinary or than what is typical for our area. And then in anticipation of the summer months coming, and of course, our fiscal budget ends June 30th. So perhaps for May and June, we could have some hot Santa Anas coming, blowing everything here and there. I just wouldn't want the palm tree trimming to be in any way affected. I wouldn't want, even with the contract that we have with Colt, with the debris flying around in parks and all that and in our streets, I know that they wreak havoc, not only for that, but for street sweeping, public works, you name it. I just wouldn't want those to in any way be affected because we'll definitely get a high call volume from residents.
Right. Understood. And if you look back at the winds that were actually considered rather historic in their velocity and their intensity, the damage to trees in the city of Montclair was actually relatively small. It was almost insignificant. And I think that is a result of the active pruning and removal effort that we already have in as it relates to diseased trees and through our normal annual pruning process is broken down into zones. And the Public Works Department stays on top of that pruning, working with West Coast Arborists. And of course, the city regularly looks at trees to determine their health, even to the degree of having West Coast Arborists bring in a horticulturist to analyze the trees and determine the status of their health. So with that effort, I think we maintain a relatively strong and aggressive program in pruning the trees and removing the unhealthy trees from the community. So we're seeing less and less damage as a result of these windstorms.
And then just finally, a general comment with respect to revenues. I, yes, I'm sure our Measure L projections haven't made the mark. But in addition to that, what we also got to take into consideration is this domino effect with respect to state funding and state revenues. And they're projecting a very significant deficit in the billions, I believe, for the state, which no doubt affects localities such as ours and municipal governments. I believe, well, did I read right, our VLF funding was, there was an increase in that line item, correct? VLF?
For the vehicle license fee revenue? Yeah, but I don't, if it was, I don't think it was significant.
No, it was. But nonetheless, at least there was not a deficit in that. But it wasn't as high as we typically get. So there's other external forces beyond our control that we have to kind of take into consideration and whatnot. I just wanted to point that out, just so the public understands that any impending cuts in services or programs or whatever that might, I'll stress the word might, be coming. It's not always the fault of the five of us on this council. It is perhaps just the lack of available funding as a result of circumstances in the economy from the state, since we're state-dependent, basically. But anyhow. And my colleague to my right, Mr. Rue, is correct. Although I've been guilty of it too. I'm not going to be up here, preach one thing and state another. I have been enticed many times by shopping online and having things brought to the doors. It's just convenient. But I will make an effort to try to find it locally at a store. If it's not there, then I'll go that way and have it brought to me. But brick and mortar businesses are definitely the backbone of this economy, backbone of this city, not just restaurants and eateries, but the small mom and pop shops that you see. Please, go patronize them. Even if it's just a $10, $15 expense, it helps. It helps. Go to Costco, please. I mean, and if you have the money, buy a car. That helps. But definitely go to Costco. I mean, that's one source of great revenue for us. But yeah, it's just, it's odd times, odd times. But anyhow, thank you for your presentation, even though I was there at the tail end of it. And thank you for your explanations.
Mayor Procham.
If I may, just a moment. You're absolutely right about the state funds, but it goes beyond that. The federal funds are obviously a big concern for us too. We have $100 million in applications for grants as well as pending grants and funds that have been approved already in total. I believe it's $119 million. That money, as far as staff is concerned at this point in time, that money is lost. It's not probably going to come back to us. And this means that we are going to have to look internally to complete a number of the projects that we had planned on with available lease revenue bond monies and other projects that we wanted to move forward on probably are not going to occur. Just last week, we did receive notification from the state of California that we were fortunate to receive a $2.8 million award from Caltrans in relation to improvements on Benson Avenue. But those dollars have a federal connection to them. And it's questionable as to whether or not we will see those dollars as well. There is one thing that I did leave out and that I have to bring up. And that is that the old CalPERS issue is back. As the council knows, we addressed this a few years ago, back in 2021, when we did pension obligation bonds to wipe out the city's unfunded liability. $63 million is what we gave to CalPERS at that time with the expectation that we would be able to stay on top of any growth in the unfunded liability that may be attached to our account on an annual basis, presuming that those dollars would be manageable, probably below $1 million. Unfortunately, again, with stock market not only declining today, but being up and down in the way that PERS manages investments related to all of the various funding schemes that they are involved in, our CalPERS cost for this next year, I believe, is going up to something like $1.9 million. And the year right after it will be $3.6 million on the unfunded liability. Those are costs that we did not anticipate. And frankly, that $3.6 million alone, after you deduct the annual payment on Measure L, that basically gives money left over for the CalPERS payment. But the Measure L is already allocated out with salary increases, benefit increases, and other increases in the budget and everything else that we've done over the course of the last four years. Measure L is no longer a funding source with new money that we can anticipate, particularly with projected reductions in sales tax revenue, not only for the main component of the general fund, but for both Measure L and Measure F. So there is not new money laying around any longer. And we are back at annually dealing with keeping the budget under control the best we can through managed fiscal operations. And that's just going to be the future again.
You mentioned the...
Let me, let's go to Councilman Mayor Procham Martinez next. When I come back afterward, it's fine.
Thank you, Mayor DeTray. So my apologies if this has already been answered, but City Manager Star, I just wanted to ask, given, considering all the proposed changes, what are our reserves looking like?
Well, our reserves remain healthy. We're not tapping into the reserves. So I believe that in the case of the unrestricted reserves, we still probably have $8 million in there. And then in the special purpose funds, the numbers there are 20, what are they, 32 million? Something like that? So from a reserve perspective, we are healthy. But keep in mind that the reserve monies are, they're not recurring revenues. Those are monies that have simply been set aside over the course of the last many years to build up those funds so that the city does have the ability to respond in an emergency in case revenues drop significantly. And then you draw down on those reserves. But I think the important issue for reserves is that you always have to remember, these are static dollars. They're not recurring. So you can't commit them to ongoing expenses. You can commit them to one-time expenses. And then know that that decline in the revenue account that you are using is a permanent decline unless you find new monies to put back into it.
And the last, I recall, I think we were somewhere in the 25% range? Or am I overshooting that? Do you remember?
25% range on the unreserved, we are just below, well, no. Now that the budget has actually grown, the $8 million probably is closer to the 20% range.
Okay. And then part of the reason I ask is, you had expressed in your city manager report that there's concerns that the tariffs may affect the bid proposals for the Gold Line. And is that a situation where we may consider tapping into reserves to...
So, we won't know until April the 10th. And so all I'm doing is speculating, but I'm speculating based on 2017. 2017, the Gold Line Construction Authority allocated $1.5 billion to build the Gold Line from Glendora to Montclair. When the bids came in, the bids came in under a 2,000 tariff that was imposed by President Trump in his first term on steel and aluminum. And the contractor, Kiwit Parsons Joint Venture, in the risk component of their bid, had determined that because of the anticipated impacts from the tariffs, that they believed that the cost on steel and aluminum that were essential for the fabrication of the Gold Line would greatly raise the cost of their project. So their bid came in at $2.3 billion, which was effectively $800 million more than what the Gold Line had available. So they struck Pomona, Montclair, and Clermont from the project. The only reason that it got built to Pomona is because the San Gabriel Valley cog took their share of LA County Measure R money for street improvements in the 11 cities in the cog and committed that to the Gold Line to build it from Laverne to Pomona because they felt that from an economic perspective, building the Gold Line to Pomona would have a more positive impact on their respective communities as opposed to doing a street improvement within their respective towns. So to the point of your question, would it be wise or is Montclair have the capacity to fund a deficit in relation to whatever that number may came in versus what the San Antonio County Transportation Authority has approved? I can't answer that question yet because I don't know what that number is. I'm hoping that it's within the bounds of what has been allocated, if not a little bit more. But that would be a decision for the council to make. So for example, we have approximately $32 million left over in lease revenue bond money. If the Gold Line project came in at $120 million and SBCTA was willing to put in an additional 20, up to 100 million, would the Montclair City Council be willing to take $20 million out of the lease revenue bond and commit it to the Gold Line? From my perspective, my recommendation to the city council would be that the long-term positive impact on the community to get the Gold Line here would be worth it. But the council has to make and weigh the impact it would have on other projects that the community has in line. So for example, Saratoga Park. We may have sufficient monies to complete Saratoga Park, but you would probably have to exclude everything else that we have planned. But I say we have to cross that bridge when we get there. And therefore, it's premature for me to give you an explanation beyond what I just did.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I was going to follow up on your comments in response to mine. And I think you just answered it with respect to the award of funds that we were expecting and were told to get. And you said that they basically, for all intents and purposes, we should just expect that they aren't coming. And I was going to ask if that affected the money from, for Saratoga Park and then the San Antonio Trail?
Yeah. So, real quick, and then I guess if you have more questions after that. Saratoga Park, we do have $2 million in community facilities programs money from Norma Torres, Congresswoman Norma Torres. We thought that those dollars were protected because they were earmarks. And we have now learned that Congress has determined that, in fact, those dollars are not protected and probably will be recalled.
And the San Antonio Trail?
The San Antonio Trail, that's grant money. We've already spent it. And so we've already been reimbursed. So the portion at Sunset Park is safe. That money's been expended. We haven't received any additional funding except for design development and that and associated components like that.
And then, in my opinion, related, where are we with respect to the marijuana ordinance? Because if we were to get that implemented and drafted, we would have marijuana establishments that we could then draw from with respect to potential sales revenue. How close are we getting to seeing that draft, that summary from those consultants finally get to us?
So Economic Development Agency Director Fuentes and myself have been having regular meetings at least every two weeks with our consultant, HDL, as well as legal counsel in relation to development. We believe that we will have a draft ordinance hopefully by the end of this month. In fact, we've already scheduled a meeting with our legal counsel to go over that draft. So that is, I think, an indicator that we are expecting that that draft will be in our hands relatively soon. And then we will go over that draft to make the modifications that we feel are necessary to meet what we believe we need to bring before the city council. Keep in mind that the ordinance will probably be a very brief ordinance, probably less than 50 pages, maybe as few as 30 pages. One of the reasons for that is to try and avoid the SEQA process so that we can get an exemption on the ordinance. Apparently, more that you put into the ordinance, the more likely that you will not get a SEQA exemption. So we want to avoid that because that will be another prolonged process. And we don't want to engage in that, nor do we want to engage in the costs related to that, which could be a couple of hundred thousand dollars if we had to go down that road. So we do expect to bring it to the city council relatively soon. We have had a economic evaluation done. And maybe we can have it to the city council, perhaps by June. And that way, we can start projecting some funds for next fiscal year.
All righty. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I'll concur with the city manager's comments earlier. This is not going to be an easy budget put together for this upcoming year. So I'm fortunate that the economic instability is upon us. And unfortunately, we have to make some hard decisions going forward, putting together budgets. So it's not going to be fun like it was the last two years in regards to the budget. So with that, do we have a motion for the adoption of the immediate budget review?
Make a motion as presented.
I'll say again.
Okay. All in favor, please hit the voting machine. Five zero. And with that, we're adjourned. Thanks.